Welcome to Kilo Hills regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. Thanks for being out here. Let's get started with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we get started, we usually take this time to get together for a moment of silence. I think all the folks out there who are having a tough time this evening and keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. We'll have an agenda in front of you, so as is usual, we are... See if you've got any comments on that or we're looking for a motion to approve.
I like that question, Mayor.
We've got a motion to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a couple of seconds. That's your favorite. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. We have an agenda. First item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is an amendment to the town of Kilo Hills zoning map. Do you want to make any statements on the front end of this or are we just taking people to the podium? I'll see Casey usually guides me through these things.
I can, Mayor, I can take care of this. Casey's going to be just a few minutes late, but I'll be happy to take us through this.
Okay, super.
Thank you. There will be a public hearing conducted this evening by the Kilo Hills Board of Commissioners. The following rules and procedure will apply to the hearing. The public notice of the hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town's bulletin board that meets or exceeds statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made a part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to this issue into a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphones if their statement will be taped. There will be no debates. Please identify yourself when you come forward by giving your name and address. Mayor, we have no, no one has signed up. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this matter this evening? And there, I will add that this was a staff-generated amendment, and we have nothing else to add. Pleasure the boards.
Right, just for the benefit of the folks watching, listening online and folks here in the, in the audience, if you're not up to speed on this ongoing discussion for the last few months, we're making a few minor changes to our zoning map that you see on the screen there. This is mostly related to an area here near the, near the schools where there is currently some teacher housing and there's some, some land there that was previewed or is currently a residential low one, residential one, R1. And we are looking to switch that to LI1. Is that right? Yeah. LI2, sorry, I was thinking it was two. And then a couple of little housekeeping pieces to have the zoning more line up with what is actually had been built in certain areas that are adjacent to that. So we have gone over this at previous meetings. If you want to get into the backstory, there's lots of, lots of paperwork and notes on it. Here at the dais, any new comments or anything we haven't covered on this topic? Otherwise, looking for a way to move forward here. I really appreciate staff's work on this. It's, uh, it's going to offer opportunities for teacher housing and have density be our friend in the places where we'd like it to be our friend. So without any further ado, I'll, I'll leave it to you guys. There, we do need a consistency statement with this one.
Mayor, I'll, I'll jump in and make a motion for approval. The proposed amendment to the town of Kilo Hills zoning map, official zoning map, is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the town of Kilo Hills that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides consistency with the existing and neighboring land uses.
All right, excellent. We have a motion on the floor. Looking for a second. Have a second. For Mr. Gray, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the motion carries. Thank you all. Next item on our agenda is public comment. We do this twice every meeting here towards the beginning and as well as at the end. So anyone here in the audience would like to speak? No one has signed up, but if you would like to speak, let me know. Yeah, so we just asked you to come to the podium so it can be recorded as well, so it could hear you. Just identify yourself and where you live and you've got three minutes or five minutes to representing your group.
It shouldn't take too long. My name is Duke Garrity. I'm the Governor Affairs Director for the Out of X Home Builders Association, and I just studied the map, set out the map, the, the new water system plan. What I noticed is a 50% increase in the system development fee. We have a lot of houses that haven't been able to start. Appraisals, surveys take six to eight weeks. This is a big jump. It's hard to go back to a customer that's already been approved for a mortgage or the thing is, the plans are all set up. And now all of a sudden, we have a $2,000 increase before we get into lumber. And this is bigger, 50% is bigger than the lumber increase we've had in the last six months. So I am going to ask you, I want to listen to the report tonight. I'm not saying we don't need water, we don't need system working good. Our economy down here depends on good water. And, and it, it looks like a very thorough plan. I can't, you know, it's an engineer plan. I can't discuss it. What I can talk about is maybe facing in that, that big increase in one shot. But I have to go back to my members and nobody knew anything about it last night. We had our meeting and I got to go back to tell them now that this passed and it's going into effect with the new budget in July. And if you get your permit now and you're paying this to get ahead of the game, you're going to be paying water tap fee for the next six, eight months while we build the houses. So I'm asking you to think a little bit. I'd like to hear the report tonight, see what we need. And again, we are favorable. We need the water here. It's very important. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Anyone else interested in the first public comment period? Seeing no one running towards the microphone, we will close public comment. And any response to public comment? I'll, I'll just say that, yeah, with a very thorough plan and, and we will, we'll take a look at those comments. Appreciate it. Thinking from the board, good. Uh, any old business?
No, sir.
All right. Then new business. We will jump right into the big topic of the day, the 2022 Water System Master Plan update. I believe Mr. Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. Pete Burkhammer with American Engineering. And you get a tag team tonight. I'm just going to briefly introduce this item and then when the SDFs come up in the next one, I'll be your primary speaker on that. But just in summary, and my associate, Patrick Lewis, whom some of you were met, able to meet earlier tonight, will go into a little more detail, but only as much as we think you might want. And then you can ask any questions as you like. This is the 10th anniversary year of the last Water System Master Plan performed by another consultant who did a great job. We've tried to follow well in their footsteps, I think we have. But you know what's happened since then. During that last 10 years, we painted the Eighth Street elevated tank. We've got a brand new Old Town Hall elevated tank with, not quite twice, but 400,000 gallons versus 250. And a beautiful renovation job has been done on the 500,000 gallon ground storage tank at Old Town Hall as well. And we continue to peck away at our inventory of AC water mains and replace it with more modern materials. So thank you for continuing to maintain a healthy water fund balance through the fees and rates that you have so that we are able to keep a reliable system to deliver safe drinking water and when we need it, plenty of water, volume and pressure for firefighting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Patrick Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Board of Commissioners and town staff. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to present this plan that we've worked on to discuss the CIP budget for water going forward and also the fees that are going to be necessary to continue to maintain the system as we go forward. So in the presentation tonight, we're going to speak about, you know, the purpose which Pete has talked about and then go through the different items that are on the agenda. I'll spare everyone reading through that so we can get to the meat of the presentation in a quick manner. So when we looked at the rate determinations, we, we took a few things into consideration that are extremely important to look at, especially with the economic conditions that we're seeing now in everything that's involved with the water system. We took a consideration of the current inflation trend and looked at historical inflation as well so that we could try to come up with a best guess and a methodology that would work going forward. We reviewed contractor pricing, and this is extremely important because over the last couple of years in the water projects that have been completed within the town, we've seen a significant change in contractor pricing to the upside. And we want to make sure that we capture that properly going forward so that a small inflation adjustment on two years ago pricing doesn't put everybody behind the, the power curve. We chose an O&amp;M cost escalation of 3%. Over the 10-year period, we feel that's going to be appropriate because while it might not meet inflation today, inflation today is not likely to stay this high for the 10-year period. So if it comes back down to around historical norms of 2%, the 3% assumption across the board should cover those costs as we go forward. And then finally, we, we used all the information to put the cost for the capital improvement plan together. This is a dollars budget for the next 10 years on the CIP annual costs. And then an actual list of the different projects as determined by different things, including when infrastructure needs to be replaced and when it would fit within the program to not have an overbalanced year throughout the next 10-year period. And that's the second five years of the plan. So when we took a look at the water usage rates, we chose three different scenarios to look at. The first was a 2%, which would match the normal amount of inflation that you would see in a, in a regular environment. And we took a look at what that did to the overall fund balance. So if you take a look, the cumulative fund balance is in the, in the, the blue and it takes it from about $9.3 million down to about 3.5 or 3.4 million. That's a pretty significant drawdown on the backbone of the, of the system, which is to have that fund balance in place in case there would be a major need for use for that. And we took a look at a six-year yearly rate, a 6% yearly rate increase. This would take into account the type of inflation that we're seeing today. Maybe a little bit above what we're seeing today, but just to see what would happen. And the blue line, which represents the cumulative fund balance, goes from about 9.3 or 9.4 million dollars all the way up to about 16.5 million. That seems to be quite excessive for what the needs of the town are going to be, but that's just what fell out of the, the rate analysis. The next rate increase level that we looked at was the current 4% yearly rate increase. It's been in place for a little while now. And as you can see, the blue fund balance goes from about eight point, or about $9.3 million up to about $9.8 million over the 10-year period. It's a little bit less than normal inflation, but because this balance is there for, for a need if it arises, keeping that balance level while still doing the capital improvement plan that's falling under this time period shows that you're maintaining the fund balance and keeping the system up to the standards that are expected by the citizens and businesses within the town and the regulatory requirements of operating the system. So we chose the 4% rate increase as the recommended rate increase for the water usage fees. And you can see on the tables that we have here how the cash flow works. Some years it'll be positive, some years it'll be negative, but that's offset by the fund balance in the years when it's negative and that's replaced back in when years are positive. One thing we wanted to note is, is that this capital improvement plan does continue the periodic and methodical removal of the asbestos cement water mains in service at this time. So you're able to continue the same program that you've been working on in the past. And again, that's the second five years of the, of the fund balance. And so the last thing that we needed to take a look at with the Water System Master Plan was a discussion of the SDS for the water system. There's been updated infrastructure, including new construction that's happened since the last rate increase was looked at. We took that new infrastructure into account to set the appropriate value of the system according to the North Carolina statutes that govern this so that the actual true value of the system was taken into account. Because one of the purposes of the SDF is for new users to pay their fair share of the existing system so that when they connect, they're getting their fair share of the use of the system that others have already paid for. In addition, we had to take a look at renovations. There've been portions of the system that have been upgraded, like the tanks that Pete had talked about, and we need to take those things into account as well because they have a capital cost that needs to be recovered for a fair share use level of the SDF. So then we took the unit prices that are taken into account for the value of the system and we use current pricing to reflect those values. We think we've come up with some values that are appropriate for what we can expect to see over the next five years just so that we're not overly inflating a unit price based on one bid on a contract. We took a look at several different contracts that have gone through to get piping prices, valve prices and labor prices that make sense for what it's cost for the value of the system. And then we took all of the information, put it together into the calculation where we developed a compound rate for the 10-year period to determine what would the appropriate rate be for the increase of the SDF from current levels if there was an increase that was necessary. And the last chart that you'll see here is the equivalent meter unit calculations for the SDF. And we've listed them by the meter sizes that are accepted within the town's water system. And you can see that there is an increase of $2,000 from 4,000 to 6,000 on a 5/8 inch 3/4 equivalent meter. And so in summary of what we've completed with the water rates and the capital improvement plan and the Water System Master Plan, we recommend that the town continue the strong capital improvement program that you have in place. You're staying well ahead of where you need to, but you're also putting yourself in a position where if you need to go a little bit further or take a break for a little while, you can do those things within the flexibility of your system. Included in that is a recommendation of the 4% rate increase that we spoke about for our usage rates and then a $6,000 base SDF for that 5/8 inch meter size. And at this point in time, that completes the presentation. If there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer those so that we can make sure that everyone's questions are addressed. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much. Some really great, go ahead. I was just saying, really impressive package you put together and goes into all the math in great detail. At the same time, your presentation really simplified it so it's easy to understand. Just to reflect on the gentleman's comment from the Home Builders Association, when you look at it in, you know, one big jump of 50% does seem pretty dramatic, but I guess this happens over a long period of time. And you're always trying to balance the weight between the rate payers and development as you, as you go forward with a system of that size, which I think would value at $37 million. Was going to talk, speak to the town manager to say, timing wise, when you mentioned it would take effect at the, the next budget, how, is there, is it ever phased in? Is that something that we do?
We, we have not phased it in. Typically, it's run concurrent with the, with the new budget year.
Right, and just from a nuts and bolts perspective, when you've got developers that are coming in or homeowners building a home or whatever, what's the, what's the timeframe look like there? If you're, if you're paying your water tap fee this month, when, when is that taking place? When do they pay the fee in relation to the building itself? Is that, is that the permitting point?
Are you talking about the water, the water tap fee? When they get their permit, their building permit?
Right, at the building permit time, right.
Is when they pay the, they can do it outside.
Picking what?
No, I was making sure with Steve that you couldn't purchase the tap outside of the, the building permit application. I was just.
Oh, right, right, time wise, gotcha. Yes, it's sold when the building permits pulled. Right, gotcha.
You want to make sure this property has water available there. It's, you're required to have that fee paid prior to getting a building permit because water is required by North Carolina law.
Of course, yeah. And then they have a year usually.
But you can't, you can't jump the gun and get it without a formal site plan.
Got a whole site plan and all that.
That's what I was confirming with Steve real quick is that you did have to submit the site plan to, to get the, the tap. And just go by the tap all by yourself.
Right, exactly. And all the site plans that, that would come in between now and July 1 are under the current rate structure.
And we've, this has happened, we've done this before.
Yeah. There's an incentive to get those plans in, right? Incentivization, it's a thing.
We've had people that didn't pick them up in time. And then we have to send it back and get it redone. So, yeah.
So I know all the folks that do this for a living are paying close attention, so. Does anyone else on the board have questions for the presenters or anything about the, about the plan that you have in your packet?
I would just, it was very easy to kind of read and understand and well, well prepared. Presentation was very good. I think for people in the room and viewers at home, you know, it was very easy to kind of wrap our heads around. Thank you.
I'd like to think that we can understand engineers. It's still good about it.
You made it very user-friendly. We appreciate that.
Yeah, user-friendly.
Appreciate that, thank you.
It does feel very thorough, like we're, you know, it's all based in, in as good a numbers as you can find. You mentioned some of the things that happened way, way back. It's hard to tell, but there's also interesting to look at all the expected ages of all types of things. A lot of them are expected to last 100 years, but some of them are 50. And it's, it felt really good to know more about how it all works. Thanks again for all the hard work. Any other thoughts down at this end of the table?
No, just, I think it's a good, good presentation. And, you know, I keep thinking about the infrastructure, you know, that we need to make sure we take care of and, you know, for the town so that we can move ahead.
Yeah, and we're doing that without debt. We're paying as we go and that's just not something that every town can say. So we're good, good in that direction. So a motion is in order if anyone would like to, to be honest.
Mayor, before you take your motion, it might be useful to remind that, I guess your motion would be to accept and adopt the Water System Master Plan, but this particular item we're on right now isn't the one that has to do with the SDS. The SDS, this is sort of the kickoff of a 45-day period. Or you set when the 45-day comment period is and the action to put it in place effective July 1 occurs at the end of that 45-day period, if I'm right. So I just didn't want somebody to make the motion to adopt that SDF when I think that would be premature.
Right, they would, they would just be adopting the Water System Master Plan as presented and then we'll do the next part and number two. The motion that's outlined in.
Gotcha, right. That's a very good point to make, you're right, to make that clear for everybody.
So I'll make a motion to adopt the Water System Master Plan update as presented.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? We have a master plan.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, item 2B is the Southern Sanitary District Ocean Acres wastewater development fees.
To, we do 2, 2A first.
2A first, I'm sorry. Water system development fees. There you go. Jumped ahead on myself there.
And understandably so, Mayor, since we did sort of get into that at the tail end of the WSNP. I'm not, I don't have much to add to that except as I said, this is the introduction, the presentation of this recommendation to the board and the board can take a number of actions on it. But the state statute that went into effect in 2017 led us to do the first edition of this in March of 18, effective July 1 of 18. The statute requires that, once done, this has to be reviewed and updated with new math at intervals not longer than five years. Now, this is at the fifth year, this is the end of four years, but we chose to get it so that it lines up with the WSNP updates from here on out. So you'd have two of these and every other SDF update you'd be on cycle for a WSNP update if you hold that, that pattern. So Patrick did a good job of presenting that to you. We do recommend it and I certainly appreciate the gentleman from Home Builders' comment. It is a fairly substantial increase. 50% in four years is, is not to be sneezed at. But it is what flows from the numbers. The, the numbers say that what we are paying to get water infrastructure built in 2021 and '22 is that much higher than what we were paying then. I wish it were lower. I don't like inflation very much. The numbers, when you follow exactly where the numbers lead, could have justified up to a $7,300 fee. We rounded it down to six, just as back in 2018, the numbers could have justified 5,400 and we rounded that down to four to give us some cushion in case any of our assumptions weren't quite perfect. And it's hard to make them perfect if you were to see exactly how they're derived. So the $6,000 is our recommendation. And to somebody's very intuitive point, I thought, we, we need this money to help fund capital projects, but the SDS fund part of it and just the rate payers fund another part of it. And I thought you might be interested that in a typical year when we have an average number of new building permits and so on for residences and the other larger things which pay bigger SDS, it's 10% or maybe a little less on average. Am I remembering that right, Patrick?
Correct.
So the general rate payers are still paying collectively about 10 times as much as the brand new folks on the block are. Not to say it's not a lot of money, you know, 4,000 or $6,000 is a lot of money added on to the price of a house, but it is, it, it's not just because the value of houses has gone up, it's more because the cost of doing water infrastructure has gone up. Now, it may be, and I hope that this proves to be the case, that when we're visiting this again in 2027, that it will have flattened off and there'll either be no increase or a much more modest one than this. But this is where the numbers lead us. And interestingly, and this only applies to the Southern Sanitary District. Or should I wait? You want to announce that item before I speak to that? Okay, spoiler alert, it's less. It's a no-kill margin. I'll stand by for questions.
Gotcha. Right, I appreciate the 90%, 10%. It's a, it's a tricky bit of math. Same thing is true if you're building a new house, you're amortizing that cost over the 30 or 50 or 75-year life of that house, depending on how it's built and how it's used. So it gets to be a really small number when you break it out that way as far as that portion compared to the rate payer portion. But I didn't know that before, so I thought I, I, you told me that one. So these are water system development fees. Just make sure we get everybody on the same page here. I want everyone to know what we're talking about. And in this case, well, maybe before I jump too far ahead, you guys have any questions? No, no here? All right.
So if it's a pleasure of the board, we can now do the Southern Sanitary District Ocean Acres Wastewater System Development Fees for that, that study. And then to, to the end of that, at the end of that is where we actually do a motion that sets the public hearing that Pete referenced 45 days from now. And, you know, and being clear, you approve this and then you get your budget that you approve before the end of June where it is listed again. But, but this is, this public hearing, April the 11th, would be when you would actually vote on the, on the numbers.
On the numbers and stuff. Gotcha, that's the only thought. And the only thing I wasn't clear about is whether A and B were combined together. And I guess that's the idea, yeah. The two, two A and B.
Yes, sir.
Right, heard, excellent. Right, heard that one.
Yes. For the public hearing.
Good. Okay, the Senator Sewer System Development Fee is a much smaller scope, and it's done a little bit differently. The the overall methodology is the same. We tally up the total value of the assets, the sewage pumping stations, the force mains, the gravity sewer collection lines, the manholes, et cetera. And we lay it all out, and we assign a replacement cost, new, less depreciation. We subtract out anything, just as we did with the water, that came from grant funding or developer contributed, though that's not added in, so builders and developers don't double pay for that, it's subtracted out. But as as I think everybody in the room knows, but just to recap, only the southern part of Gildeville Hills is served by a city-owned or town-owned sanitary sewer system. It's basically the Ocean Acres subdivision and and its immediate environs across the bypass, which is actually part of Ocean Acres historically. And there, instead of there being a price for a, or a system development fee by meter size, like 6,000 for a 5/8, and on a larger and larger for the larger meter size, you simply take a 120 gallon per day sewer flow allowance per bedroom times the number of bedrooms, or if it's non-residential, and there are a few in this, that where you would just add up the total gallons per day per the state-approved flow generation rates, and then you multiply that times a dollars per gallon per day figure, and that amount goes up from $12.31 is what you're charging now, to $12.95. So we're talking about more like a 5% increase versus the 50% recommended increase in the case of the water system fee. There are, what, maybe 15 lots or something like that left, undeveloped lots, so this, it's not a big revenue stream, but we have to have a number as those last few lots come in in that area. And and our recommendation is $12.95 per gallon per day of capacity. And I'll stand by for any questions on that one as well.
So that's the other side of the water, the part that goes out. Yeah, I think that 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 follows for me, and then I guess you said like on the commercial, there were commercial things that were redeveloped based on the health department's gallons per sink, per toilet, per, did they do it like that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right. So, Mr. Stevens, help me again, what are we trying to get done here? We're trying to set.
Set the public hearing, yes, sir.
Set the public hearing at this point, that's right.
It's a 45-day review of any public comments that are written.
Gotcha, all right. So one more chance for questions from the board? Otherwise, we're looking to do that on the last page there.
I'll make a motion to set the 45-day review and solicitation for written public comments with a recommended public hearing for April 11.
All right, we have a motion on the floor for April 11. And is there a second?
Second motion.
Second. BJ, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? Hearing any?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
That concludes your business, sir.
Discussion total later to the end of the meeting, but for now, we're going to jump to committee reports. Committee reports.
I have something just from the tourism board. So just a couple of quick things. I was appointed to the steering committee, so I will be the assistant treasurer.
Treasurer.
So I'll be learning lots of new things in that role. So I will be meeting with Diane with the tourism board this Friday. And in addition to that, there, the tourism board is also starting a long-term plan. They've always done, here's sort of like a three-to-10-year plan. This is a plan that we're going to start working on, or like a 20-to-30-year plan, it's called 2050. And we'll have a moderator and a speaker come in to do some long-range planning for the Outer Banks. So I was really glad to hear that, and I've offered my, I volunteered to be part of that as well, so, because I think that's really important for all of us to think about the long-term benefits and impacts of tourism, so.
Yeah, we have a vision for a future that's long, sees into the future.
Long-range plan, yeah.
That's great, well, thanks for for that, and congratulations on the leadership role that yes speaks highly of of your fellow board members.
Very good.
Thanks for representing us well down there. I guess that's the last committee report, now we're going to go onto Commissioner's agenda. Let's turn this in.
I I had a resident come to me, and I was going to say congratulations on, to Ivy on her leadership role, because I understand there may be, maybe, some willingness to look at grant money for sidewalks on a town-wide system as far as moving towards multipath. So check it out, more exciting. I think that would be something that that would be very good for the town, and let's see what you can find out. That's all I have.
Oh, yeah, always stay up on all the deadlines, for sure.
Yeah.
That'd be in the line there.
Uh, nothing for me.
All good. Yep. Have you anything else? All right. Nothing particularly for me, I'll talk later about budget guidance, but we'll move on down to that. Next item is the Town Manager's Agenda.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, Town Attorney's Agenda.
One item, actually.
That's right.
And I had submitted a memorandum and actually the resolution that we're proposing for adoption tonight, that was attached as well. I'll give a, just for the public, a brief explanation of what's happened. For one important note, that what what's occurring here is not an amendment to our town code, and I'll tell you why, but that is important, because if we were in fact amending the town code, we'd have to have a public hearing. We're obviously not, we're talking about it on my agenda. So this is specific to fast food restaurants. It's actually, there was an applicant that came in, a fast food applicant, who caused Meredith to have this flashback of when reviewing the application that, well, wait a minute, I thought we had already made a change to this portion of our ordinance. So the long and short is this, back in 2011, there was a meeting at which the, this particular chapter, which we're asking to have this resolution adopted on, which is Chapter 153. dot zero seven seven D seven, and what that particular adopted, an approved amendment to our text, to our ordinance did, was allow menu and preview boards at fast foods, at fast food restaurants to not exceed 60 square feet, which was a raise, if you will, it was an increase from the previous 35, Meredith, is that correct? Previously, prior to the 2011 adoption, it was 35 square feet in total display area, and the height was changed to eight feet. What was the previous five? Okay, so we had an increase in both the height and the total display area. Well, less than a year later, which is actually pretty critical, this isn't in my memorandum, but I will tell you what we believe happened. So we adopt ordinances, we send those things off to American Legal Publishing, that's entity we use that handles our website, when you go on our town code and codifies everything, puts it all together. Well, sometimes it takes a while for that to occur. So in 2012, Chapter 153 dot zero seven seven, which is our, essentially our signs ordinance, a few changes came back to the board. And those changes were strictly in relation to lighting, specifically neon, LED, flashing, you know, the signs that have the banners that scroll, okay? So the idea was to place restrictions on those particular items. Well, it was a simple cut and paste of the entire ordinance, for whatever reason, in terms of what ended up getting adopted that particular night. Well, that included the old language from D seven, the 35 total display area, the five-foot in height. Reason being, though, is because we don't think our code had quite yet been codified by Ameri- American Legal Publishing. Exactly. So it wasn't implanted into the code that you would find if you looked on the website. So in any event, in reviewing the minutes, there was zero discussion of height, zero discussion of surface area, it was all about lighting. Probably most importantly, that 2012 public hearing, where this was inadvertently included in the adoption, when advertised, and of course, we have to let, the purpose of putting the public on notice and advertising our hearings, are to let the public know exactly what it is that you guys are going to be considering, not just some general statement that you're considering stuff about signs. It would have been, in particular, actually, their strike-through language that gets published as part of the package, that tells people the precise language that's going to be changed. The total area and the height was not struck through it. So there was no intent, and actually, defective public notice. So we've got a substantive issue, we've got a procedural issue. The bottom line is, in doing the research, what that means is, any change, purported change in 2012, inadvertent change to D seven is actually null and void as a matter of law. But we still feel it's important that, even though this doesn't affect that many, we don't have that many fast food restaurants, i- it's important to go ahead, write this inadvertency, and and instead of doing a public hearing, because again, we're not amending anything, this is what's been in place since 2011, we're putting forward and proposing that you guys adopt the corrective resolution, which will become part of our town code, that puts the public on notice, if you will, of the inadvertency that I've that I've been describing, but also puts back in, doesn't touch any other portion of Chapter 153 dot zero seven seven, only reinserts the 60 square feet total area and the eight foot in height so far as preview menu boards for restaurants. So if you have any questions beyond that, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's the the background on what this crazy memo is all about.
Gotcha. So the short version of that is.
I don't know how to version.
The short version.
I tried, I tried.
In my line of work, we're often sharing documents back and forth, electronic documents, if you have a Word doc or a spreadsheet, and you shoot it back and forth, and sometimes you leapfrog over each other, we call that version control, when version A is copied into version C and B gets lost. So again, Google, Google has saved us from a lot of that, we can work on the same doc at the same time, but.
A lot's changed since 2012.
A lot of that did exist in 2011 and 12, but you did a great job explaining what is, yeah, kind of convoluted, but I think everybody, we got, everybody got your head around what happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a clerical error on steroids involving a third party. There's another way to put it.
I'm more than satisfied with that explanation. I would just move to recodify the language to the zoning code, which was adopted in 2011.
All right, second motion and the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? Moshe Carey's, thanks for all your work on that, I knew that was some soothing to figure out what happened.
Well, I think, I think we have to give our, give a hand to Meredith.
Absolutely.
Institutional knowledge.
Yeah, you've been here too long, and you're like, I've already done this. And it wasn't that long ago, and then you pull it, you're like, was it 12 years ago?
Déjà vu.
It's here. It wasn't that long ago. I told you that was going to happen one day. I know, but I didn't believe you.
Donna stepped in real quick and said, yeah, I remember measuring them all in town. I remember ours.
We had to measure every single menu board in town, and it worked, we had to do it in the winter when it wasn't busy, so we didn't get run over, so we were freezing and.
Cold, oh, yeah. Take measures.
Memories fade back quick.
I was, yeah, I was sitting there, I doubt I've done this. Thank you.
signage has gotten very sophisticated since then. All basically on high-def TVs, and it used to be like, printed. Yeah, world, okay. So we have got, we got that done. Did we both go with it?
Yes, sir, yes, you did.
Good, thank you.
Remember, we took that, yes? All right, so anything else from the Town Attorney?
I have nothing, Mr. Commissioners, thank you.
All right, Mr. Stevens, our consent agenda.
Yes, sir, just three items on the consent agenda, the minutes from the January 10th, 2022 Board of Commissioners' meeting, budget amendment to close and transfer escrow funds from the Public Works final page capital project fund to the general fund, and lastly, a revised per diem rates for travel. The last update that we did for our per diem for travel was in 2006.
Speaking of long term.
Like to recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented, that would put these rates in effect beginning March 1, 2022, and a motion would be in order.
Super, now we should probably update those more often than 2006 to now.
We all move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Excellent, we have a motion to approve, is there a second? We got a second down here. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay? Moshe Carey unanimously. Thank you for the consent agenda.
Thank you.
This leads us to our second public comment period, if anybody's heard something tonight that has inspired you to come up to the podium and tell us more, this is your moment. Seeing no one scrambling for the mic, we have one last chance, we will close public comment. We respond to that. And our last item here before our adjournment is a discussion of our fiscal year 21, 22, and our plan year 22, 23 regarding budget guidance.
She's going to do a pile of that.
I knew we were going to be all. Okay, good, yes.
Stop wanting it to get confused with all the others.
All the others.
Paint and work that you can give and talk them.
It's a formative day. May I? Thank you.
I have some extra copies, if anyone would. Okay.
Bye, guys. Thanks, you, thanks, you.
All right, good evening, everyone. I think it may have said Beverly was going to do this, but I'm Angel Dowdy, I'm the Assistant Finance Director, and we have just put together some highlights, just to kind of show you guys where we are financially right now. We'll look at some of our revenues, some of our expenditures, and just some things that we want to think about as we start preparing this 2022, 2023 budget. So here, this just shows you overall what our total budget has been past several years. We prepared a plan year budget for 22, 23, and that's on there as well. It's broken down among the general fund, the water fund, and the wastewater fund. And those numbers, general fund is about at 21.2 million for what we had in our plan year budget, and we're really going to focus in mostly on general fund for the rest of the presentation. This shows you what we estimate to be our townwide tax value. We are estimating it to be about $3 billion. So that just broken down means that one penny of tax that we levy generates about $300,000. So same for MSD, we are estimating that to be about $206 million, so one penny of tax on our MSD properties generates about $20,000 of tax that we use for each direction. These are estimates, but we do expect those to be pretty steady as we get those. This breaks down where our revenues come from. The adware that I just talked about is a big portion, as you can see in the blue, and then we have sales and occupancy, and land transfer tax is another big portion. And this shows you our actual revenues that we had for fiscal year 2021, and then this will also break down the plan year, which is 22, 23. So not too many changes there in that breakdown, that gives you a good idea of where our revenues do come from. This shows you where our assessed value has been over the past several years. You can see. This shows you where our assessed value has been over the past several years. You can see that big jump in twenty twenty to twenty-one. We did a revaluation effective January first of twenty twenty. So we expect um just modest increases as we just account for the annual growth, but there's not another revaluation coming up. So just modest increase in what the total assessed value should be. Here, this breaks down what the actual levy has been. Um, again, just modest increases over time. Um, in the current fiscal year that we're in now, we have about nine point two million dollars that's generated from our adware tax. It's not seen to be working if you wanted to go forward, Meredith. Thank you. We want to keep in mind that our tax levy does influence our revenue sharing percentage that we get. This um accounts for how much of the occupancy tax and the sales tax that we get. Right now, we're sitting at about twenty-eight point six four percent for occupancy and then eight point nine seven percent for sales tax. So changing the levy does influence what those numbers are. So it's just good to kind of keep in mind where we stand um with those percentages. So this shows where we've been recently on the share of revenues, specifically the occupancy and the sales tax. Pre-pandemic levels, it was pretty steady, right at under three million for each. Through the pandemic, we have seen uh great increases there. That has, that's where those two major increases are. And we project it to increase from pre-pandemic levels, but we are projecting a decrease from where we have been through the pandemic. There's no real way to know where it's going to go. So we've just done our best to kind of forecast where we think is a good place to land. But who really knows where it's going to end up? No, that's good, right there. This just shows you, it kind of breaks down just specifically the occupancy tax. As you can see before the pandemic, uh, the budget is shown in the blue and those were pretty, pretty right on with what we actually received. During the pandemic and those two high red bars, the budget was way lower just because it was so unpredictable. But you can see there in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three blue bar, that's where we budget for next year to be, uh, which is right in line um with where it was pre-pandemic, a little bit increased. But again, down from where we are during the pandemic levels. And then this sales tax has kind of followed the same pattern. We've been right on track pre-pandemic. It boosted up in during the pandemic and we're projecting that it could decrease from here, but still increase from pre-pandemic levels. So here, we're taking a look at our fund balance. Our fund, unassigned fund balance as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one was sitting at about thirteen point four million dollars. We have projected in our plan year budget expenditures of about twenty-one million. So that puts us at an unassigned fund balance of about sixty-three percent. We showed you here what our policy requires, which is to be at or above thirty-five percent, which would be about seven point four million. And a good way to think about that thirty-five percent is if something, some emergency were to happen, that would cover about four months of expenditures without any revenue coming in. So we thought it might be helpful to see what the other municipalities around us are sitting at. So as you can see, we're kind of right in the middle there, some a bit higher, some lower. So we feel like we're in a pretty good spot there, being about the average of what unassigned fund balance is as a percentage of expenditures. So moving on a little bit more into our expenditures, this just shows you a breakdown of the expenditures by function. We have the actuels um for the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-one. And then we have what we project for the year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. So not too many changes there, public safety and general government expenditures kind of leading the way there. Something that we will definitely want to consider are personnel expenses. We kind of talked about inflation a little bit. The Consumer Price Index has a seven percent inflation increase. Social Security is about five point nine. You guys probably remember as we did the budget last year, we talked about a two point six percent increase and that's what was in the plan year budget. So we put numbers here on what, how much more it would cost if we were to bump that up to a six percent or even a seven percent, just to give you an idea. Kind of to keep up with the inflation, but definitely something that we can keep an eye on and see kind of where those numbers go as we continue to prepare this. Here's a look at how much our debt service payments have been over the past several years and then what we project for the plan year as well. These payments include vehicles and equipment, our public works complex, and then also the beach nourishment debt payment that we make. And the beach nourishment for the prior projects that we did several years ago, um, we did, we will be paying that off. So that's where that drop comes in. But something that's not reflected in these numbers that just to think about is not for the plan year, but we do have that public safety facility to be thinking about. And again, that won't be in the plan year because we're in such the early stages of it, but something that will come into play in the future. So American Rescue Plan funding, we have received our first installment, about one point one million, and we should be getting another one sometime this summer for a total of about two point three million. They did recently release the final rule, which kind of opened things up a little bit more for us to be able to spend this money. But it's still not just a free for all, do what you want with it. There's a lot of restrictions, so it's always good to start thinking about what we want to do and make sure we can do something that, you know, follows what these rules are. On the dates to remember, we have to have decided and have this money committed by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And then the project has to be completed and expenses all complete by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. This is just to show you our beach nourishment project that we're slated to start this summer. This is where the funding for that is coming from. The biggest portion is coming from FEMA. That's the orange portion that you see. We also received quite a big grant from the NCDQ, that's that darker blue. The red, we're receiving funds from the county. And then that light blue is what the town will be responsible for. So we were able to get quite a bit of help in completing that project, which has been great. And this gives you an idea of our reserve fund balances, what they are at the end of December of twenty twenty-one. So this is money that's available for these projects um that we already have set aside. And then in our plan year, we had set aside six hundred and sixty-three thousand for streets and stormwater, a hundred thousand for sidewalks, thirty thousand for shoreline accesses. And we didn't have this in our plan year budget, but we are recommending to include about nine hundred and ninety-five thousand in our beach nourishment project. And that is just some of the highlights, just to give you guys an idea kind of what's coming and where we are. So if you guys have any questions or.
Once again, taking something very complicated and making it nice and easy for us to understand, we appreciate it.
There's a lot that goes into it for sure.
Yeah, it's very hard to predict what will happen next year. It looks like looking is looking good, but uh again, always better to be conservative on these things. We can all decide what to do with the money later, but can't count on it. Any other questions?
Great presentation.
Great, great, great. I appreciate it. It's good to be thinking about this as far in advance. We got a few months leading up to uh talking, you know, talking about the budget over the next few months. So it's a good uh place to start. So we really appreciate the update. Did you have thought? I thought you were trying to get my attention there, sorry.
Oh, no, no, sorry.
Misread the cue there. Masks. Turn the masks. Hopefully, we're on the backside of this thing, not going to some blood. So I think we've talked a little bit, just having a little bit of a just discussion in general. That's some guidance for staff about um uh things we're hoping to see in the next budget and sort of general directions, not being too specific, but um hopes and dreams for the town and try to make it a better place for everyone to live. So I'd love to just kind of go around and get basic thoughts. I know we all sort of have the same similar themes about multi-use paths, about things that help uh maintain our parks and recreation opportunities for residents, water access, and I've got a few other things on my list, but I'd like to get you guys to get it started.
I'll get it started. Commissioner Gray touched on this earlier during Commissioner's comments is, you know, one thing I get a lot of feedback from the community on is expanding multi-use paths and pedestrian accessibility all through town. And I, I know everyone on our board has been probably approached a few times about landing Collington Road in front of Wright Brothers and Royal right out here. I know that's uh just tricky. I mean, it's National Park Service, DOT, home property. But uh, just, it's always been that one item that folks have been consistently been asking for.
You notice it when you drive by.
Absolutely. And then also is that last, you know, big piece of the puzzle we're, we're missing, to connect all of our existing infrastructure together and then link up to the other municipalities in the county have done. So, you know, one priority for me and is, and I think, you know, it's worth looking at is really kind of bumping that up a ladder as much as we can uh as a potential project in the future.
Tie into a lot more people using the Collington Road.
Yeah.
Because that's going to get some um bike lane, I guess it's seven feet um all the way through there. And that's getting started this year.
I will share with the mayor, um, um, Meredith has had considerable discussion with Superintendent Alec concerning that. And, and our goal, our goal is some kind of a, a joint situation that would involve the park service, DOT, um, with what Commissioner Gray mentioned earlier this evening, possibly the Visitor's Bureau, and then of course, um, contributions with the town. So that, that would be something that we would, that we would really like to look into is various different levels of grant funding that may be available and the other partners um that would participate with us.
So my last discussion with him was over the summer and he graciously asked me to wait till this time of year to have a sit-down conversation. So I would, I would definitely like to do that with him. He was very open to the idea. He liked the idea. I don't know about the funding part of it, but definitely supports um the idea. So it would be good to sit with him.
And I don't know if this would be beneficial, Commissioner Emmer, for your conversation with Visitor's Bureau to be involved um with that sit-down.
Yep, absolutely. And I think actually there, it, the, in the National Park Service plan, maybe, I think it was like a three to five year plan that they came out with about a year ago. There is actually a multi-use path that runs through the backside of the park. And I think the idea was to connect the whole thing potentially.
And when we were. If I, I might be wrong. They did a series of public hearings and they spent a lot of time with Dave and the person writing the plan about connecting that one fifty-eight with having the, I think Steve actually helped me with having the Collington Road plans in hand, showing that they were putting some sort of, it, it's more of a bicycle or an extended shoulder than it is a sidewalk, but they are doing uh non-motor vehicle transportation um additions to the Collington Road project. We had those plans and showed how it would tie in basically all the way. Now that the bridge is open, those, those tasks go from Oregon inlet pateras to Whalehead Club. And that's the length that's gone.
That's the one little, the one little place left.
The conversations have been really positive.
Everybody wants to get it done.
Yes.
So it's front burner.
Well, yeah, let me know whenever you end up.
Hey, look, Commissioner Winley has talked about, I'm, I'm getting, the comments that I'm getting are converted from the sidewalk to the multi-use um through the town. And, but I noticed that Nagseth is doing a pretty aggressive sidewalk improvement program and they're starting to hit the uh east, west sidewalks. So I think that we need to look at what we can do to increase our funding and, and what if we do it, we're putting a hundred thousand dollars. You know, what can we do more? Can we put more in that? And then, then combine that with the grant programs that may be available. You know, we may be able to make some serious headway. And just in a general discussion, I think we have to be very, very conscious about the fact during the budget process to make sure that we have monies um set aside to uh support our uh emergency first responders. They're, they're just vital and that's got to be one of the things that's discussed when we talk about where are we going to put money and where we're going to move money. You know, we got to protect that as well. That's two things on my, on my list. Then the third thing that I would have would be parks. You know, we've got an excellent opportunity coming up with uh some of our park improvements that we did with the neighborhood lot, with the uh access uh program over here to get to nature conservancy and get, you know, some, some trailheads, I think they call it, where you combine the conservancy and the state park. You know, we can, we can use some money there to um when we start maybe developing back in that area. So that's one of the three things that.
Yeah, we met with the superintendent of Jacqueys Ridge recently about improvements back on the bomb track and their, their willingness to partner with us.
Are they?
Both with land and monetarily for nature trails and possible access to the estuary waters through the state park, through Run Hill.
Yeah.
Not through the nature conservancy, but through Run Hill. Really good conversation um with Ms. Greenwood. And uh, so we've had those meetings too.
All right. Yeah, it's a great resource back there, but it's hard to access at this point, so I love the.
You got to get some improvements back there, like the parking lot and things like that to, to start sending people back there.
Sound, sound side access in Nagseth is greater demand than they'll ever have parking for. So watch what you wish for, whether you get access to the water.
We don't really have a sandy beach. Um, that's in our area.
That's good.
But we could, we could definitely do some, some board walking and, and it would be a good bird watching kayak launching type facility.
I think, I think it would be great in that, you know, so that's some of the things I want to talk about when we start talking about budget and stuff like that. You know, we need to put maybe a little more funds in that area. And see what girl with magic wand can do.
I'm, I'm, I'm in uh agreement with everybody uh in their wishes. I uh also, you know, I feel like we've stalled a little bit, although it's probably not really true, but I just feel like we stalled a bit on our, our parks. And, and even if there is additional money, I would like to see more money put towards that to make them even more, um, maybe we can make them even more special. Still, I know, I know there was, you know, Terry headed committee and I, I feel like it's not, at least the couple of years I've been in here in this position, I just haven't seen the, the action. I'd still like to see a little more action with that. I don't, that's one thing that I don't think has improved much. Obviously, you know, while I, while I've been in office here, and I would like to see more of that and maybe more money directed towards it to make them even more special um than they could have been um in the first place. But also, I'm very interested personally in, in the other side of uh Nagseth, was there, in the, in the Fresh Pond, still that, that uh is, is kind of a burning thing in my mind that, you know, the fact that that's, that's uh fully gated up and so it's such a beautiful spot. I'd like to see, you know, us continue to work towards getting that uh opened up to some extent.
That's some good news for you on that front. I actually had a conversation with somebody just yesterday that turns out there is a, a group now in Nagseth that's also pushing in that direction. And uh, you know, we have half of that pond and then, but we have no real way to put any parking near it on our, that's not on our side of town, in our town. But if, if Nagseth uh gets together and seems like there's a few people trying to move in that direction to have access through the, the parking lot by the soccer field.
Right, right, right.
Then there, there might be some opportunities and I'm sure there'll be some discussions between the two towns, two boards about what we might be able to do together. Kind of a long-term, you know, off in the horizon, but I think there's more movement than there had been the last time we talked about it a few months back.
Let's do this, though. We, we've already agreed that uh BJ and I will, you know, be in touch with the nature conservancy. Let's go ahead and call them. with the nature conservancy. Let's go ahead and call them, Meredith, and see if we can set up a meeting and coordinate with BJ and I so that we can all meet and talk about it and try to push it forward.
Yes, we had that one. We had one meeting and we just need to keep bumbling on, that's all.
Can we do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Right away. We're staying there right away, but you know, it's okay. I like to hear the story about people water staying.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. This guy, I think.
Good deal. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
To what? Up onto his. So I think for me, in addition to this, the sidewalks and I agree, the recreation and, and all that, I'd like to see a little bit money, a couple things towards our beach accesses. So like what we did with Prospect, I think that was a great addition. It looks wonderful. And no lumber is expensive, but possibly moving towards composite. I know. Yeah, as we upgrade. And I know, I know that's, that's a tough one, but I think it's, I, I think it could pay off in the end using composite lumber. I think personnel is a priority for me. So anytime we can take care of our employees and make it easier for them to live closer to where they work, I think it's, that would be a priority for me as well. And then the final one is wastewater. And I know Pete does a great job, but I just think in, in terms of, maybe not in terms of this budget, but in terms of long-term, now that our, you know, land is getting more taken up and we have less watershed space and less, you know, we have more runoff, just making sure that we're keeping up with wastewater and maybe stormwater. Yeah, stormwater. Storm, I'm sorry, stormwater. Yep, yep. So this would be mine.
We've got a big, was it Wrightsville project is coming up that will really help the stormwater upgrade to a big section there next year.
The following year.
The following year, one more year later, that's right.
And as, as you're aware, and I think other members of the board are aware, we have applied for a grant. Is it Vic, Rick?
Rick.
Rick. Steve, if you want to kind of give an overview of what we've got our fingers and toes crossed on.
Building resilient infrastructure in communities. Apparently Duck was awarded last cycle for NC-12 sidewalk.
Reasing the whole road up there.
And so we looked at, it was close to six million dollars, adding a parallel major drainage infrastructure in Wrightsville that'll help Memorial. We all know that's, that South Memorial area gets overwhelmed easily. And then the big key is adding another link across the schools to the sound side to help those three ocean outfalls when they get overwhelmed. So we should hear back about that in July. The one thing that I may put Pete on the spot, we're, we're, I would say the, the past practice with Third Street, we were quite aggressive doing the whole thing, adding the sidewalk, the water main. All the contractors seem extremely busy and the labor costs are going up. Materials, seems like monthly we're getting five to 10% increase from suppliers. You're, I'm concerned that what we've had the last eight or 10 years, your purchasing power is really going to fall off in the next couple of years. So how that impacts the budget, it, it'll be interesting to see if a 1.2 million dollar project becomes a 1.8.
Record inflation. I mean, we've, we've seen it with Neekens Field. I mean, just, just to find someone to do the construction and the bids just overwhelming and trying to go back and maintaining the integrity of the project, but being able to get something accomplished is just been very frustrating.
We're on the path.
We're on the path though.
Gonna get there.
Yes.
It's coming.
But what I'm, what I'm hearing from the board, if you'll go to the last page of this handout, the presentation that Angel did, what I'm hearing is you would like to see more than a hundred thousand put into the sidewalks.
And shoreline access too, probably.
Yep, yep.
And then more, we used to do more in the shoreline access and the recreation, but as budgets got tight, things got cut. But I think what we need to strive for is to build, is to build these reserves back up and then prioritize the accesses or based on ones that are in need of refurbishing or upgrading and so forth. And in doing that, and then in conjunction with what grant funding is available, we have the money in our reserves to cover the town portions as, as we've done in the past. So what, what we will strive to do in the budget that's presented to you in May is to, is to up these reserve funds and start building them back up as, as we had done in the past.
Yes.
We need to see, you know, what impact they'll have and what we can do. We've had some, some good news lately, you know, from in the financial world. So, but the thing there is.
And then I would also recommend that the two million that Angel spoke to, and I'm not sure how many pages back that is. As the rules allow, I would recommend, and Beverly and I have had a conversation about this, but we would recommend that we use that money towards our infrastructure, whether it's, you know, sidewalks. And I'm, like I say, I'm not sure what the final rules allow, but that would be the type of recommendations that we would come back to you for that. I know it's one-time money. I don't think we should use it for ongoing operation expenses. And everything you're talking about tonight is what I consider to be in our infrastructure world. So to the degree that that's allowed, that's how we would like to look at that.
Perfect, perfect.
Well, you know, Mary, you talked about doing a project over on the vitro with some sidewalks and stuff. So I think we can just, we can look at how we can expand that and what impact it would have and then make a decision on how we want to go.
Right. I really like the way this conversation is going because it's sort of thematic and we're going to have new opportunities when it comes to these grants that we can craft projects around whatever their requirements are to take most advantage of them. And then same, we are undershooting on the expectation of revenue based on the uncertainty. I'm on the optimistic side that there'll be some, some surpluses as it happened the last two years for at least one more year. So as we've taken care of a lot of other things, we got the good coal in last year. I think we'll work on a good coal for this year as the inflation is high. We'll take care of that. I'm, I'm with Ivy on there are certain departments that if we have the opportunity to expand personnel, the folks that are keeping up the place looking nice, they, they're shorthanded, it seems to me, so we could look in that direction. But I have a little list and I just wanted to make sure I got these out here. And I could send this to you later if that makes it easier. But these are kind of all over the place. I was just noodling on this document for a while. Some of them are, they'll fall in that one-time project kind of thing that we can do that's special, special right now. Some of them are ongoing budget things that we do with the regular budget, but just sort of turn the, turn the way we think about them. And some of them are just big five and 10-year plans on how we think about, like you said, bike and pad and things like that. So the first one, we already checked this box. It's really about making sure that fund balance is where we want it to be because times are good. This is when you try to put it away for a rainy day. I think Ivy was alluding to the fact that there, you know, there are things that the maintenance is not where we'd want it to be. So we're looking at those deferred maintenance items that might be handrails and things at the beach accesses or the showers or things like that that don't need to be done. But if we have a little extra money, that'd be a nice place to put it because it really is something that the town, folks in the town will notice and appreciate. Here's a little more strategic kind of one of hopefully we can create budgets and planning to have at our disposal to offset incentives we might want to give to folks that would be creating workforce housing. We've talked about, you know, the things that we can do to incentivize. If we had a budget that was aimed towards that, we could say, this is how we are aiming to help. Anytime we can get, and I've mentioned this multiple times, not so much as making it financially feasible, as how can we make a future in which a higher percentage of our housing stock is deed restricted to not allow short-term rentals. Now, they're all short-term rentals. They're very helpful in a lot of ways, but if we, if market keeps going the way where the highest and best use is so far higher, it's going to run us all out of town eventually. So anytime we can do something that's going to offer a homeowner or a person who's developed a piece of land, something that would, they would get a benefit from us, it would cost us a little bit, but in the long-term get our deed restriction so it wouldn't end up in Airbnb or, or short-term vacation rental. That's what's going to increase the number of houses that we can live in to help solve our, our labor shortage problem, which is really a housing shortage problem, a year-round housing problem or challenge, I should say. I don't like to call it a problem, it's a challenge that we will meet. Let's see, beach accesses. I, I mentioned before the, the lighting and that we might be able to scale them up in their quality. Showers, the, maybe some landscaping, railing caps, decking, all, all those things, they function, but they, they don't put our best foot forward. So there are lots of opportunities there. This next one is a five and 10-year multi-use plan. We kind of really need to think about it in a big, big picture. Like, well, what is our goal for five or 10 years down the road in terms of non-vehicle getting around? I think we're kind of all aligned on that. This is one that I've been beating, this one for about 15 years since I, when I was on the planning board. I think that if we spend a little bit of time and energy and money on keeping the bypass looking nice in terms of the little things like edging the sidewalk, sweeping the gutter, throwing a little bit of fertilizer once for a while, that just making the bypass a little bit greener and a little bit neater and cleaner would help all the businesses in town, make everybody feel better and just be a really great return on investment. I think that you see other vacation destinations that really put their best foot forward on their main, you know, their main street. That's our main street, basically. It really is a virtuous cycle, helping business and helping everybody's quality of life with something that really doesn't cost all that much. If we could figure a way to get that in the budget, that would certainly.
We need to survey whether more personnel are needed in that area.
Right. I think those two are tied together. Yep, exactly. If this is something that we take on ourselves, then we need to have more manpower on a more annual basis. That's a maintenance issue. Or maybe it's a contract sort of scenario where we put the private market bid to bid on it and see if we can come up with it.
We do contract.
We do contract now, yeah.
We do contract with a firm that does additional mowing.
Yes.
Didn't feel that the NC DOT schedule was sufficient. Is it four times a year, Steve?
I think, I think we budget five.
Five, okay.
So, yeah, we do five and they do a couple of other ones right here. Because the DOT's goal is to keep the grass from being too, too tall to see over. We'd like it to look like you might be able to walk across it. And so it's not so tall that it collects trash and things like that.
And those, those contractors do a great job. They really do. I've watched them when they come through and they do a great job. But I think what you're talking about is a little bit more of a manicure-y.
Yeah.
Type of thing. And that, that would have, in my opinion, that would probably have to be in-house, you know. So, but that's what we need to look at is.
So these are, these are goals. And I think that if, you know, everybody's in agreement, then that's something we can look forward to as well. The last couple here are sort of big, big picture ones too. And they don't necessarily have to be additional money, but just a different way to look at budgets that we do have. I think we're heading into a world in which they're going to eventually stop making, a lot of car companies are only going to make electric cars. So we have opportunities to show, sort of show the public the opportunities with electric vehicles. When we replace vehicles, now's a good time to start thinking about that. Pretty soon, we're all going to own a car that's our, our last, our last gas car or our last drive-it-yourself car. I don't know when that's going to be, but I, I think it's the job of government to, to try to inspire and show people what's possible and help lead in those sorts of directions. And, and that could also go in, come in the forms of demonstration projects like were done at the schools with wind, solar. There's all sorts of opportunities to have demonstration projects where we partner with other groups to offset our, our power needs and make them greener. I think that, that we have an opportunity there, especially in this time when there's a little extra money in, in the, in the coffers.
Not, not me interrupting you, but remember we had conversations about bicycle racks?
Yeah, little things like that.
So, you know, we, we've seen a lot of people come up here on bicycles and they're wearing a buckle. So maybe we need to put a bicycle rack out here. Or maybe, you know, maybe we can look at where they would be, you know, a good place to put them.
We got Eagle Scout that needs a project, right?
Yeah. Maybe that'll help people. But hey, I'll ride my bike if I really got a rack.
Yeah, if you have a place to lock your bike, you're much more likely to ride a bike. I know that the mayor of Naxhead rides his bike to a lot of his meetings.
Everywhere.
Show me up. Get over here.
I think he did.
Come on my skateboard, show them.
He rode to our last meeting.
Yeah, he, he likes, oh, way, way over there, right. Oh, here, yeah, that's right. And the last one was kind of a long-term thing. This is really not so much about budget, but just things for us to think about is that, is that that bound track, that's getting a lot of great use with the disc golf and what other kind of activities can we, you know, bring that to folks' attention? That it's a great resource to use, not just for disc golf, but to go out and do other things. But what is our 20-year goal there? If we really want to get access for our citizens and folks to go see the sound or have water sports, access to the water is certainly something everybody wants, but it's, it's not going to be cheap. So we need to kind of think strategically about how we could get to that point and what kind of partners can we go with.
Got some thoughts and plans on that, right?
We've done a bomb track study that had went as, as far as an outdoor amphitheater to, you know, to much more manageable type facility. And then the West Side Recreation Group also did excellent work back there and took that study and pared it down for really more of a five-year plan than a 20-year plan, trying to really get something accomplished back there. So.
Right. That's baby steps. These are not things we're ever going to.
With the end, one of the end results, updating our recreation plan.
Correct.
Yeah. So, you know, that might be a good opportunity to develop that thought process.
Certainly, yeah. And we definitely want to get everybody's ideas in the town and get stakeholders out there, you know, people have lots of good ideas and this, this is the kind of thing that we also work on together.
Yep.
That's right. Alright, so I ran my mouth way too long as usual. Anybody else have any other thoughts about budget guidance for staff? Alright, well, that was a really good discussion. I really appreciate everybody putting their mind to it. And thanks for everybody for staying a little longer for us to chit chat. It's always good to be able to think big and think about the future. That said, everyone's got places to be and it's cold outside. So looking for that last motion for whoever wants to do. Yes, out of here. All in favor, say aye. Alright, we are adjourned.